I got it.
Did we get them?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't.
Did we get them?
We didn't get them, just the 13th.
I didn't number those. I just don't need a special permit.
Okay, I'd like to call the order of the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for June 10, 2024 to order at 7:05 PM. First item on the agenda is the 24 minutes.
We do not have the May 28 minutes. We do have the May 13 minute. I will entertain a motion to approve the May 13, 2024 minutes.
I move that we approve the May 20 as hundred.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. On favor.
Hi.
I abstain.
Yep, he wasn't here.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public to bring up anything that is not already on the agenda for this evening.
Susan Jaisley covering for the Board of Trustees.
Susan.
For the Marso, I'm an observer for the community party.
Okay, hearing nothing else, entertain a motion to close the public comment period. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor?
Right.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for revocation of special permit number 2021-4516. As per Village Code, Section 145-59D11, the Village of Lansing Planning Board will hold public hearing to discuss the revocation of the Lansing Metis, the special permit number 2021-4516.
Mike, anything you wanted to kick us off with? Mike's coming out, it looks like. We'll wait for Mike to come out.
No.
Okay. You could have said that over the...
Exit stage or no entrance stage left or whatever. Geez.
Okay, Eric, anything that you wanted to bring up that's happened since the last meeting?
Sure. You know, as I mentioned, I was out last week and John and I have been trying to get together some of the last Friday because he was out. So John and I agreed to meet today. I've spent plenty of time going through everything. You know, John, I've been reading the letter you sent to the board previously with, you know, a lot of information about the Health Department and our letters and everything else. So I got all, took a look at that today. And, you know, John and I went through a lot of the stuff. One was the letter you sent to the board. Do you want me to go through that? Or you guys, how do you want me to address that?
Whatever you want to share.
Okay.
We obviously have the letter.
Yeah, no, so I'm just going through the letter. John said, look, why don't you take a look at the letter and just respond to it. You know, the last meeting, so this is the first one, I guess, I apologize, but maybe you can follow through this thing.
Hey, Mike, do you...
That's the May 22nd letter.
Do you want to bring, do you want to bring the letter up?
Yeah.
For anybody here.
Yeah, bring the letter up.
Yeah, can you bring that letter up, Mike?
Yeah, I've got it. You just got to share the screen, Mike.
I think John did go through it point by point during the last meeting.
You should be good, Mike.
John's letter? Yeah, that's the letter.
Yeah, I had not seen it, so I couldn't respond.
Well, we had this, we had this letter at the last meeting. I had it up on the screen for everybody to see because John went through it all.
Yeah, could you make it a little bit bigger?
Can you zoom in, Mike?
Yeah, Mike, if you tell me how.
Bottom right hand corner. There's a little slider there.
I can't see that.
May I put enable editing to be able to...
Sometimes Ctrl+P will do it.
And I don't think I can do it from here.
I have.
Is he sharing it from his screen?
Well, I just, I can't read it up there.
Yeah, he'll bring it up.
Do it here.
Do you see the slider? It might be hidden behind, Mike, your...
Oh, to make it...
I don't know what...
It's probably behind your face, actually.
There you go. There you go.
I don't know if you can see that down there or not, Mike.
Down where? I can't see what you're talking about.
Bottom right, bottom right of where, at the word document, there's a little slider. Yep, jump that up to like 150 or something, maybe. Oh, there you go. That's good. Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay.
Is that better? You want it bigger?
I don't think you can see it.
I can see it.
Uh, so, go ahead.
Okay, so some of the things, obviously, he has other attachments with it. So first one, manhole grims that were just in the asphalt need to be cordoned, as built. The drawing had the red marks on it with dated survey 8321, you know, additional surveys. If we head forward to those to you for the easements on 82422, and additional one was modified again in 2023. So those have already been done, modified.
Have they been filed?
Was provided to John, then?
Yeah, provided, and it provided as part of the sewer easement that he's given.
Well, no, no, no. Were they given directly to John?
Yeah.
Not via my office from you?
Yeah, no, he's had them done from TG Miller.
Okay, as of what date?
Well, he's worth, the one he has is 2021, August of 21.
So is there one dated post May 22nd?
No, the attachment that was signed, it attached was a survey with red comments on it, and that was, that survey was signed August of 21. But we amended it in August of 22, and we amended it again in August of 23. We went out, we did the graphics, but the survey has to sign it because it's their work.
So has John, what I'm asking, has John seen the 2023 survey?
Is that this thing?
Yeah, that's that thing, Lisa, yeah. That's, that's...
So that he is satisfied as to point one?
Should be.
No, this, look, look, this, this one, this was gone over the last meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And John, John does not have this stuff. Yes, there was, there was a recording of the ASBills, but some of these have changed. You said from, what they got from, what was it from TG Miller? Or where was it from, Eric?
It was from TG Miller, Mike. And then what happened was John, it raised the fact we spent plenty of time, we shot, and it has to be signed by TG Miller because there was a survey of it. If he doesn't have one, I'll get John's on a copy.
I was gonna say, I'm not understanding either. I thought we went over this last time, but okay.
We did. What, what has changed from the last meeting?
Yeah, what has changed from the last?
Well, I guess, so the last meeting, this was, to me, I'd never seen it before. I didn't realize, I sat with John today. And John, so I would keep going through the...
But what was John's response when he said, we have a more recently dated survey, 2023, that corrects your concern on point one? Did you say that to John?
So John and I had hour today, and he had to leave. So we went through...
This is point one, though. So like, when, point one, when you told John, I have a survey that you haven't seen yet that, that addresses this.
He's not been given the surveys. He has the surveys.
From you? Are you assuming that my office gave them to him?
Well, additional copy was sent to you.
Okay.
So that's what we were working on, the surveys. The point is, they were, they've been done. This is stuff that we have done, John has. I'm just trying to emphasize it now, because we're...
So you're saying that number one is done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, these, these were brought up when John was here last week, and he went over each bullet point. And basically, what the planning board wants to know is what has happened since the last meeting. Has anything done since the last meeting to address any of these issues?
Right, well, they said, Mike, I was gone there last week. That's why I asked the board to push this, to follow me, and that you're going to be traveling. So we did it. So I came back, remember, to try and meet with John. And the first day, John was able to meet with us today. So we went through these. These are done. So some of the points John has here have already been completed. When this was raised to me last night, I couldn't, I couldn't go through all the documents he had given me to see what the surveys were and everything else. So he has additional comments in here. Let's see, those are all done on that survey. They're all done. They're done in 2022. They're done again in 2023.
So these are, these are, there was an issue with the easement, and there was an issue with the main that was coming, the BJ's was dumped, the kiosk was dumping into the main. There was an issue with that situation. Has that been taken care of? Has...
That's the next bullet.
Okay.
Just addressed.
Let's go to the, okay, to the next one.
Yeah, so that's to bullet point two.
So shift sewer manhole may be approved by S6 and S3. So I'm going to go back to all the, again, the letters that John had given the board the last meeting, everything John and I sat down today. And John, the last meeting, I said, John, if we can just move, we have a 20-foot easement, like, in the back of the building between the fire and the main building, there's a 20-foot easement. So what we did, we shifted five feet because we couldn't get in the property line. We gave 15 feet. If you recall, last time, the end of the meeting, John said, I said, John, why can't we do the same thing with this? Because if we do that, that allows everything to work. So John said, we just have to go out and walk the site. I wasn't here for last week. He wasn't here. So that's the first part of it. The second part, after he sent me all these documents and everything, I went through all these things. If you, if you remember, there was a, there was a disque, a question of what a sewer main was and what a sewer lateral was.
There was no, we settled that one. Yes, that that was resolved.
Well, it's, I don't think it is.
It was resolved by us.
We made the decision that it is a main.
So in, in all our documents, they are defined. So all these good lines were approved by the BJ's that designed this site. This letter, this stays right in the front, proposed eight-inch PVC sanitary sewer main. So, and then all the drawings, sewer mains are clearly defined as eight-inch and 12-inch, and laterals are smaller. This has always been a private lateral. So if you go through all the drawings that John sent, so, I mean, here's, this is the exhibit you guys have that was sent. This is the plan that was attached to it. In there, the notes clearly state a main, a dater, 12-inch line, and it goes through here, this eight or 12-inch line, it's all in the drawings. We have a six-inch lateral. That's about four inch to a six inch, it's going to be long. And then, again, whether these mean or anything, I just, I mean, there's all sorts of definitions. But there, I understand John's, but in the drawings, it clearly state the sewer mains that were redone.
And I, and I think the point is that the superintendent of the Department of Public Works doesn't consider it the way that you consider it. So, and we're going to go by what John says, so.
It's not.
Unless he sends us a letter to clarify this, that yes, I agree with Eric that it is a lateral, not a main. That's what we need from him.
Well, it's, again, it's by the engineers designed this, and they clearly state what the mains are, so we redefine it. And I'll sit down with John. I just saw this, I've been getting all the documents. So I was able to print everything and read through them. But in the engineering drawings, which were done, which were sent to the Health Commissioner, which were signed off on now, clearly states that where the mains are on this property and where the sewer laterals are, this is clearly labeled as a sewer lateral. And a sewer lateral can be three foot from a foundation. But I'm still asking John, the other one, why do we do the five or 15 foot? And John says, look, I'll be happy. I just haven't had the time. I've been out. So we're going to sit down. We're going to go through it.
Well, everything needs to be done.
When did you first reach out to John to have this conversation, though?
Last week.
Last week, what day?
Thursday or Friday. I was out, I was out.
Thursday or Friday of last week.
I was out.
Meeting is on Monday.
I was out the entire week. I was out.
Why not send him an email the night of the meeting to say, hey, can we come up with a time to talk? Like, how do you, how are you shocked that John didn't have time to meet when you emailed him Thursday or Friday for a Monday meeting?
Well, I flew back early so I can meet him. Monday's the first day you could do it.
Let's move on to the third bullet.
But I guess the, I just want to emphasize, like, there's...
That's still unresolved.
Yes.
Okay, let's just move on.
Fun to play, boy.
Yeah, these are the product, the sewer lateral. That's for BJ's. I've got to talk to corporate. Once we, once we agree that the lateral goes from their property, it doesn't end agrees all the way down where it connects a sewer main.
Okay. Point four?
Update sewer record draws reflect change in the bill. Once the final decision's made, that's, it's on there. And I sent a few to you, I think, Nellie, one with a $23,000 easement on vacation, a five or 15. And the recent one, we have a signed survey with the easements done like this, as they're already marked up. The next bullet point, resubmit drawings. Once those are final easements we have with you are complete with the bill, we'll send those forward. Add as constructed sidewalk, that's already done in the drawings, which were the 22nd and the 23rd. I think I have...
Which one has done? Have sidewalks on them?
That's the one that you referenced in the first bullet item?
Yeah. So those are the comments who are done.
That's constructive drawing is noted. So that one, number six is done.
This is, just so you guys can see, this is the one that John referenced that I reset you, okay?
Yes.
They're very hard to read the labels. This is the 822. It's the same thing. And what that does, it takes everything that John had, the comments, it shows the sidewalk easement, it shows a veil on there.
It shows a sidewalk easement, but we want the sidewalk as built.
See, as the sidewalk is in there. So the other one just said, it's a proposed sidewalk. And then this is the one we sent you in 2023, where we modified the five and the 15. We're trying to get John to work with this.
I certainly haven't seen this, where it's offset.
I think Jim Messenger sent that to you, Nellie.
When?
Well, it was somewhere in 23. I go back.
While I was on leave then, so.
So these are, these are just, so these show all the bullet points that John has here. It shows you, you referenced them, left the wrong document.
Yeah, it's very, it's very difficult for us to say, well, you were given this, now that this office has given this. We need a submission from you of these items prior to a meeting so that we can look them over and know what is true, what, what was given when, what's dated when, what shows what, because the board is working without visuals to know what is being talked about. And it's just, is, we just can't follow anything that's being talked about. I understand you're trying to address the letter, but we can't follow anything.
Yeah, and this is, again, I was given a letter.
Okay, but do you understand what we need?
Yes, right.
And I'm, and if you would label everything so that they have numbers, so that we can say, okay, so I'm looking at plan number, you know, I don't, just any system, some system, so that we can all be referring, go to the one numbered X.
Okay.
Or Y or Z, so that we can all follow along and there's no confusion, because there's a lot here.
I know.
And, yeah, and perhaps there's something we haven't seen that you think we've seen. And so it's, yeah, we need to back up a little bit and have you resubmit all these.
Okay.
Where, when it was done, right, and the, and everything. Okay. But there still were some things that I think that haven't been done, right?
The, I think the primary open item was these fall concrete, which John, we've talked about. I mean, that was completed, the boardman came back to you. You know, in our opinion, it was dedicated when we, it was given back.
Right.
Then we went out, and we, I talked to John, I said, look, we'll just repair it, even though it was assault that did the damage to it. It's just where it's...
Well, should have happened.
Salt did not do the damage.
Two years or whatever.
I was gonna say.
Did not.
Well, I'm just saying, the people I brought in concrete, people said, look, it's, it's only there next to the road. The park has nothing else. But I told John, I told John, I told John, we would take care of it. And then by Sunday morning, we have, I gave it to John with his name, and, you know, he's, I am not doing it for us.
What is he planning on doing it?
He's, he's in mid-August. It's his first opening day.
I think that was what, you said the second or third week in August.
Yes.
I mean, that's consistent. Okay.
That was, that was, I think that was the primary thing that was open from the other ones.
And getting John to agree to the sewer shift.
And getting BJ's.
The sewer easement shift.
And BJ's, you need to get to corporate BJ's. Might be troublesome.
It's, it's two parts, Lisa, because, you know, first, lateral, we're the lateral all the way down. So once we get John to look at that, then it's an easement for them. And it's in their benefit because, you know, any lateral across, owner's required to maintain it. And we just give them access to it.
I think that will help. We just see everything, I think.
Is that what folks want to do? Do they want to wait and get a resubmitted package from Eric, Eric, with the most current everything clearly labeled for us to understand? And we need it well prior to the next meeting. You know what the, what the rules that we follow are for getting materials submitted to us. And if we don't have them for the next meeting, my recommendation is that we vote.
Who do I, if Mike's calling, who do I submit?
You can still send them to Mike.
Okay.
But that would be my recommendation. If, if people want to wait and get a resubmitted package from Eric, if we do not have it in time for the next meeting, I'm going to make a motion to vote on the, on the revocation of the special permit.
Hey, Mike, hey, Mike, can I add something to that? Let's, let's make that, I recommend you make that a little bit, I guess, a little bit quicker or whatnot. I'm here this week. I want the information this week, so I can get it to you guys. If you get it next week, I recommend you don't eat, you just go ahead and vote.
So are you here Friday, Mike?
I'm here all week this week, until the end of day Friday.
By noon on Friday, not end of business day Friday, by noon on Friday, so that Mike has time to get it out to the board members.
So that's the 14th.
Yes.
This evening, Friday, the 14th.
Yep.
During the 14th at...
No, I think it's the 15th.
Yeah, I'm looking. It's the...
Uh, no, it's the 14th.
We have her little calendar.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
What the fuck, we don't want to pay Mike.
I understand that there's a desire to go over piece by piece in some sort of systematic way so that we know whether this is better or not. But we are well past the deadline. So even if all these, so this letter was dated on May 22nd from John. As of May 22nd, these things he didn't know about. That, that's already 22 days past the May 1st deadline.
Right.
I'm, I really would like to understand why we would delay a vote another week or another two weeks, other than just to courtesy. And I'd like that answer from, from Natalie and Mike.
So my recommendation is that we want to be very, we know that some things were not done by May 1st, but I would like a very clear picture of what has been done and to give the applicant an opportunity. I know we've given a lot of ropes in this case, but I think we should give the courtesy of having a clear picture of where we stand when we take a vote and what has been done and the scope of what things have not been done, to have a very clear understanding as to the deficiencies involved.
Well, and I think to have that information that we could put in a resolution also, or a series of resolutions, whether we vote to extend it or vote to redact it, so that it's clear in the record about...
Do you want John to see this?
And...
And if, right, and if John has anything that he wants to provide, you know, given this.
Yeah, what did you just say?
Right, because John, it may vary well, it said...
Oh, yes.
Right, yeah.
You get it, dress.
So, so how much time do we need so that all of the board members can see it and so that John can see it? Because unfortunately, without John being present here to say yes or no, we would need him to have a thing where he can initial say, yes, done, or no, not done, in time for us to review. So if we, if, if Mike needs to send it out to pack it on Friday afternoon to us, that means it needs to get into John before that so that John can annotate it to...
John will then, John will not be off the week after. So John will have some time. Mike, I can, Mike and I can speak to John about the reasonable timeline for his review and also if he can be here for that meeting to...
Right.
That probably will assess everything for us, especially since Mike won't be here.
Okay, because I think it's, it's hard for me to make any sort of understanding without having your paperwork, but also John's evaluation of that paperwork.
And I received this the 28th. I know the latter was dated the 22nd, but it was at our last meeting that I received it.
Okay. And we're giving you two weeks.
Okay.
So we're not going to vote tonight, so we'll...
Okay.
See you at the next one.
Next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number 2024-4767.
Are we keeping the public?
I would say we're keeping the public.
Oh, yeah, for, for Eric's, yeah, yeah, we're not.
We have to.
Yeah, yep.
Continue the public hearing for special permit number 2024-4767. The Bowman Captain Group is proposing to convert the existing DIX alt to DSW Invest by Space into a Class A fully climate-controlled self-storage facility managed by Cube Smart. Mike?
Okay. Since, since our last, okay, since our last meeting, Ben was sent out, is Ben on here?
Yeah.
Ben Marshall's on there. Ben was sent out on a mission to figure out how many tree units were on that property that contains decks all the way over to Best Buy. And I believe he had the help of John Schneider, who's in front of us. Everyone's very familiar with John. He has a frequent flyer miles with this board. So you'll have in front of you, I gave you the letter that Ben submitted to me. It has the total amount, total amount of existing trees and units. You've got that packet, don't you?
Yeah.
Along with a few photos. That's one of the outstanding items that is left for this special permit. Just to review that, they came up with a total of 174 units. My calculation is you have six acres there at 30 units per acre, 180 units. So there are a lot, they've got six more to put in, but that's a, 174 units is a lot of units for that lot. I, I was very surprised that there was that many.
Yep.
But if you go out there and you take a look at it, it is justified, that's for sure. So what the planning board needs to discuss now would be how you want to, how you want to address the parking lot trees and, and so forth.
I think our code actually has...
Because there is this, there is this section in the tree lot specifics to parking lot trees.
Yeah, I'll bring that up.
Okay, excellent.
I think we're going to do it.
Plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll leave.
Right, either way, yeah, we need a, you know, we need a tree planting plan for landscaping and everything for the area, but... Move that, Mike, bring it up, too.
You know, Ben, you have anything? Ben or John, you guys have anything more you want to add to it?
Yeah, I mean, we, there, there were a bunch of trees that were deeper in that we didn't count because there was a lot of poison ivy in there. So the, it was a big area. We, we just counted the easy ones and, and tried to be conservative about any number that we came up with, to make sure that if anyone else went, look, they would get a higher number. So.
Okay, so the parking lot tree says that parking lot trees must be planted in or around the parking lot so that every parking space is within 40 feet of the trunk of a tree. And parking lot trees may be counted as part of the required minimum density. However, applicant must still meet the parking lot tree requirements even if the minimum tree density for the site has been met.
In other words, we need some trees.
Yes, we need trees every 40 feet from something, whatever. Within 40. Wouldn't it be 80 feet apart then?
It could be 80 feet.
It could be 80 feet, yeah.
Which is a question. One every eight spots.
So basically, once, if you agree on something that happens into the, in the parking lot as far as trees go, they would easily meet the required minimum.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so we can, so what you're saying is do them on a 80-foot grid?
Do them on, what did he say, an 80-foot grid?
I mean, you can do them on a 40-foot. I, I would, I would put them in a way that the landscaping looks good and meets the, the, that section of the code. We'll, we'll never complain if there's more than the bare minimum there.
I, yeah, and it might be that, I don't know when, when, how, what kind of size trucks will be pulling up for whatever to load stuff. I mean, that has to be taken into account, obviously. So it may not, you may have to put them closer together in some places or farther apart or something. I mean, whatever. But, yeah, I guess if you took the grid and sort of said, okay, every 40 feet, I'm going to need another 15 trees, just scatter them around however it works, sort of thing. I think we'd be agreeable to that.
Ben and John, and one good example would take a look at Cuba Medical's parking lot. Something, something similar to that would be, I would assume, would be acceptable.
Yeah, Guthrie downtown, too.
Guthrie, are you familiar with Guthrie's parking? Yeah, that's a nice parking lot.
Down by the harbor.
By the harbor, yeah.
John, do you think you, you understand what we need to do from going forward?
Yeah. Sure do.
All right.
Yeah, so there are a couple of other things that we can still do. So we didn't do part one of the short EAF before that tonight. We can do part two, we can, do we have the seeker resolution? So there's a lot that...
Where's part, is part one?
Part one's here, yeah. It's in the, it's in the, that packet, the same packet that that was in, you have in your hand. It was underneath, no, separate, separate piece of paper, but in that same pile of papers you got.
It's not even stapled with that one. So if you take...
Yeah, it's not stapled with that one. So take that one and get rid of it. It's somewhere else in the pile.
Oh, all right.[1738.51] Keep looking.
Yep, it's in there.
Wait, wait. Thank you.
Mike potentially missed printing.
I will gather a new one for myself.
No, I have one.
I have it.
She gave me one.
But, so there, so there are a few things, right? There's the short EAF, there's part two, there's the seeker resolution, we can do part three, we can close the public comment hearing, we can, there's a lot we can do.
So we might as well.
But some of it, maybe we want to, I mean, we can go all, do we have the
I don't know if we should close the public.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't, I don't know if we should close the public comment period, or the public hearing until we have the kind of tree piece.
Yeah, no.
But that still leaves us to do the short EAF and the seeker.
Yeah, let's do as much as we can while he's here.
So I think everyone has, go ahead, Mike.
And I was going to say, you also, I turned in the GML 239 last month on the 19th, so you've got a few days for them to respond on that. But I don't foresee them coming up with anything that's outrageous, so it'll probably have to do with making sure that the energy code is met for any renovation. It'll be the basic items.
Okay.
So I think everyone has a copy of them in front of them now, or has, yes, okay. So we can go over some of these, and if people have, if people see anything that they want changed or checked, we can get an updated copy of it. Proposed action only involve legislative adoption of a plan, local ordinance, administrative rule or regulation, no. Proposed action require permits.
Approval or funding from any other government agency, no.
Total acreage, six, a little over six acres, physically disturbed, three acres. All land uses that are current are adjoining or near the proposed action, I checked urban.
Yeah, I think I, when I first looked at this, because I have it somewhere from last time, you know, there is, I don't know how far this particular parcel goes over, but there is residential just over, you know.
Chairman Park.
Yeah.
It looks like, it looks like this parcel cuts off kind of just over towards where the old Sears would have been, so it doesn't
Oh, so it doesn't totally, but it says adjoining or near, so I always think, can't hurt to put it in.
And it seems like commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should be included.
Oh, commercial, too.
So commercial and residential?
Yeah.
Is the proposed action a permitted use under the zoning regulations?
Why, no, because I looked at our chart of uses and I, am I wrong, Mike, on that? I didn't
It's in there, it's a use.
It is a use.
That should be, yeah.
So that should, that, yeah, because I looked at that and I thought, no, 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 that's okay.
Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape, yes?
I would, the only thing I would say about that is that the shed pieces are not consistent with any of the existing buildings, so I would, I would maybe consider that a no.
Okay.
It's happening to the DIX and the absolutely
Contractor base though outside
Yeah.
Second
Or out of character.
Is the, so you want to change that to no?
I, I agree with her.
I think, I think it's true, too.
Yep.
Do you want to make a note there at all?
Just the contractor base.
Contractor base.
Yep. Or would we put that in? Hold on, I'm thinking something different.
That's on me.
Yeah, yeah.
No, wait, wait a minute, what are we doing there? Because Ben needs to know this, and I need to know this, so I can say
So number six, we're going to change to no.
And you said that we've got to put some type of reasoning in there?
Yeah, just the specific to the contractor bay, the proposed contractor bay for phase two.
Specific to contractor bays phase two?
Right, it's just that, that small piece of it. Got it, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Seven is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state-listed critical environmental area, no. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic levels above present, no. Public transportation services available at or near the site, yes. Pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near this proposed action, yes. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state and energy code requirements, yes? Will the proposed action
No, I just always wonder.
How do we know?
Does it meet or are we exceeding, you know, I mean, I, I don't like the way they mark that. It's, I don't think
So it does have that note in there, if it will exceed
Oh, that's true.
Describe design features and technologies. So since there's nothing in there, I assume that it will
It meets.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Okay. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply, yes? Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities, yes? Does the site, does the project site contain or substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site of district which is listed on the national or state register of historic places, or that has been determined by the commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the state register of historic places, no. That'd be interesting. Is the site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory, yes? Yeah, I would imagine that should be a no.
No, it's, what you do is you go in, you fill out the EAF mapper, and this is a
So it was in there?
Yeah, the state gives you this. They don't give you much for explanation of why, but they do tell you that it's on there. John Schneider's familiar with the EAF mapper. Hopefully, he's nodding his head right now.
Yeah, 12B says yes, but there's no description of the yes. When we get down to the water bodies piece, there is, in the 100-year floodplain, they do give a piece, so, okay. Yes, it is. It came up in the EAF mapper.
It's sensitive for archaeological sites? What did they find there?
13A, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or land adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by the federal, state or local agency, yes, and there is a note there, digital mapping information on local or federal wetlands, and, oh, well, it says, it says yes because the information is known to be incomplete. It's on the EAF mapper page on the back. So that's a yes, because maybe they have incomplete information.
Archaeological sites, that is just
Would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any of those existing underwater body, though? No. Identify the typical habitat factors of the current environment likely to be found on the project site, check all
Nothing was checked.
Urban.
And Could it be urban answer?
I would go with urban.
Yeah, okay.
So did you get that, Mike, 14, we'd check urban?
Yes.
Okay. 15, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government that is threatened or endangered, no? Does the, 15, does the site of the proposed act, oh, I just read that one, sorry. Is the site located in a 100-year floodplain, no? There was a note in here. Okay, that's just incomplete, yeah. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources, no? Will stormwater discharges flow to adjacent properties, no? There's no change there yet. Will stormwater discharges be directed to established conveyance systems, no? 18, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids, no? Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility, no? Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste, no? So
Hey, Mike, I think that, back to 17.
Yeah.
17.
Yep.
Will stormwater discharges be directed to established conveyance system? It does go off in storm drains. Storm system there does drop off in storm drains and then head downstream through the residential area, so you may want to have that changed over to yes.
So that's 17A?
B.
17E.
B, oh, yeah, B, sorry.
Or is it, oh, discharge, no, discharges flow to adjacent properties, no.
B, though, yes, will it be directed to established
But it's an established system, so, okay.
I agree with Mike.
So it's yes, no, yes, for 17?
Or will the proposed create storm, yeah, the first question is, will the proposed, yeah, so that's a yes from a no?
17A, right. So 17, 17 would be yes, 17A would be no, 17B would be yes.
Thank you. Didn't have that right. And we have to, and the description was what?
Yeah, so for that one, for 17B.
We have to have a description.
Yeah, Mike, what
There's always, there's a, there's an established stormwater system already there that'll convey the water via underground pipes, so, I mean, whatever, I'll write something in there and, and send it over to Ben.
Right, so it's no change, but just to note what's currently there existing.
Yeah, the existing system's already there.
Right. So then, so to recap that, Mike, for five, we want to check commercial and residential. For, oh, there's two fives, I forgot about that one. For, for five, is the proposed action a permitted use under zoning regulations, that should be yes.
Yeah.
For six, is it consistent, consistent with the predominant character, no, with a note regarding the contractor base in phase two. 14, check urban. And then for 17, change it to yes, no, yes, with a description.
And what I'll do is, I'll make these, Ben and John, I'll make these changes and send them over to you so that you can make the changes on your, you know, on your sheet, and then re-sign it, and then there'll be an official submission.
Agreed.
Right. So then we can, with, since there's those changes, then we can go to the next meeting and do part two at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Again, just to, just to make note of the things that are really already there, you know, I imagine some of it will actually lessen with the, you know, change in use of the property, but, you know, there's existing things that are already there, so.
That was part two.
Yeah. Okay, any other, anything, Ben, done on that that you want to mention?
I guess lighting commission is another commission that we need to make.
We got rid of the lighting commission?
Isn't that just my
It's just a, you need a lighting plan still, that goes right to Mike Scott.
It's in, yeah.
But yes, you still need a lighting plan, just the commission is
Expanded.
Mike.
Okay. Well, the plan is to try to reuse the existing poles and lights that are out there, so how do we
So it's definitely in the code, but there'll have to be, I don't think that those are dark sky compliant lights.
No, I don't think they are.
So that'll have to be, the lighting will at least have to be updated to meet those requirements. I'm not sure what all the other requirements are code-wise with lighting, but Mike can, Mike can let you know on that.
Yeah, so let me ask the planning board this, are you yes, we're going to go through this, you'll go through the seeker at the next meeting. The other two items are, one of them that John just touched on, the lighting plan, that can always be part of a commission, or part of condition.
Condition, yeah.
Condition that, that I'll look at that before I issue a building permit or before I issue a CFC.
Okay.
And then there's a matter of the tree planting plan, is that something that you want to see, a time from the planning board, something you want to see for next meeting? And is it even possible to get it together by next meeting?
Oh, I, I think you might be right.
I mean, I wouldn't
It can't be, it can't be a condition, isn't it usually?
Yeah, the approval of a tree planting plan can be a condition on it.
Yes, it can.
Do you recommend that it not be?
I think we would be safe in this case to have it be a condition.
Okay, I think so, too.
I mean, we would like to, we'd definitely like to see it if it's something you can, to get together, great. We'll definitely make a condition on the, on the special permit when we, when we vote on that.
Okay, so I'll have that all set, I'll have that as a commission, or as a condition, and the lighting plan as a condition for your next meeting.
On that, just considering, I'm just trying to think of some of the other seasonal ones, but I don't think hang on a second. I was going to say, anything, wetlands, we don't care about. So signage, we'll need to talk about.
We need a
Sidewalks are already there.
But we need a
Landscaping plan, lighting plan, I don't know if there's anything with, like, maintenance.
The signage, they're a planned sign area, that whole mall is, it doesn't matter whether it's separate parcels or not, they're in a planned sign area, so if they do go over that planned sign area, then it will come back to you.
Okay.
But their, their planned sign area is pretty generous.
Yeah, so we're
Yeah. Okay. Something to keep in mind, though. Those are the, those are the extra notes I had.
And have we, have we seen a full site plan with footprints of buildings and heights and such?
He gave us last was that a full site plan? I'm not sure it was an official one, was it?
I don't
That packet that we got at the last meeting, Mike, was that the official site plan? What's that, oh, there it is. Was that the packet that we got at the last meeting, is that the official site plan for
There was a site plan in there, we'll have to review when the site plan comes down to the building.
I just remember that the, the rendering and the site plan
Yeah, the rendering was different.
They were different, and I just want to make sure that what we have
I think there was a fence that was mentioned that wasn't pictured either on the site plan or the rendering.
This one, was it this one, Mike? I'm holding it upside down. Mike? Was it this one, that had the floor plans with the units and everything, or was there a different one in there?
Yes, you had that, and then you had some renderings that I
Yes, yep.
Doesn't that show the contractor base?
No, this is just the interior of the building, I don't think it calls out
I don't think we've
No, we have, like, the
And it is labeled as preliminary, so
Like, I think it was like a one-page
That one has, yeah, that one has, but that one doesn't have, that's, that's not a standard
Yeah, I, I wouldn't consider that a standard site plan.
So that's another thing we, I mean, again, typical, nothing. Anything you wanted to ask or bring up, Ben?
I thought you said Ben.
Oh, Ben, sorry. Anything from you, Ben?
No, I think it's John, as long as you understand, I mean, our goal here is to, to make sure John, John knows his marching orders so we can put together a package for you.
Great.
He's used to it, he's been through it before. Okay, great, yeah, so we will pick up, pick up some of the other items then at the next meeting. Great, thanks, Ben.
Thanks, guys.
Glad you didn't have to drive all the way down here today.
Yeah, I am, too, thanks. Have a great night, everyone.
You too.
Thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda is, so we will keep that public hearing open, too, obviously. Next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number 2023-4699. Nushin Amadi is proposing to build a house on a recently subdivided parcel from 42 SD Drive, tax parcel number 43.1-1-1. But the planning board will review the request due to the site's location within a unique natural area. So we had opened this back in 2023, and I did check with Mike, it is still open. I know that we had discussed closing it, but he did let us know that Nushin was going to come back, so we kept it open, so we don't have to open up another public hearing or do those things, but you want to start with this one, Mike? I know Nushin's here, too, so.
Yes, I've, Nushin has kept contact with me on, on items, and we've been working through a couple of, hold on a second. Yeah, even, we've been working through a few other items, two of the items that you wanted last summer. She had to do a flora and fauna survey, which you have in front of you.
Yeah, so everyone should have a packet, the start of it has the Department of Planning and Sustainability, see on the top left corner, if you don't have
Yep, that one is, that, that actual information there was from the county. And it's basically, they're requesting some type of botanist report, which you are already taking care of. And like I said, you have in front of you, you have that report from Robert Wesley, and then you also have your tree counting survey from TJ Miller. Jackie Dresser did that for, I don't know which one you want to address first, but those are really the only two items left open for this special permit, along with doing the short EAF, which we have not done yet.
Let's do the report from TG Miller, because that one seems, seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the TG Miller, I mean, if you've ever driven by this, like, it's densely populated with, with all types of trees. It says on here, they came up with approximately 240 units, or 204 units. And it's, it's not much larger than a two-acre parcel, so they're well over what's needed in that area. Now, how much is coming off?
Yeah, it was
To be able to put in the driveway in site plan, I mean, that's left to be seen, and I think it would be very difficult to ask, in my opinion, it'd be very difficult to ask Nushin or the builder how many trees they plan on taking down. Because I know if you, if you go into a site plan, things may change. As you, as you are clearing out the area, things may change. Now, two of the items that I recommend, if you are to pass this on the resolution, two of the items that I do recommend Two of the items that I do recommend, one of them, let's see what I have here. You have in front of you also the resolution for the planning board, do you have that there? If you look at the conditions, I had added a couple of conditions. One of them was to, that I would verify that the proposed site actually maintains the minimum density required, which I don't think is going to be an issue. Now, you can, if you want, you can require a site plan with all the numbers, and that's up to you, it's gonna be pretty difficult to do. The other condition they had on there is what, I'm sure Brett will have something to say about that, is submitting approval of the sediment erosion plan by the village engineer. And this is a pre-construction plan and a post-construction plan. That can be done before I issue a building permit, at least the pre-construction plan can be. And which I would take that to Brett Cross and have him review that also. Like I said, that can be a condition before a building permit is given out.
So, so basically, D is kind of ensuring that once the site plan is, is sort of solidified, that we know that we still have our tree minimum, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think that probably the best, if you're gonna leave it up to me, I think the best way to do it is I could probably, instead of counting what's there, count what left, you know, what's not there.
Yeah, I would say what's, yeah, exactly. Because I do think that it's important to be sure that we kind of keep tabs on that, I mean, we know what we're looking for, is to reduce as many, reduce the removal of as many trees as possible, so I think that's a good addition.
Is that, the sediment erosion plan, Mike, is that, I was looking for documents, is that specific because of just the location of this?
Well, two, and if Brett wants to go more in as he can, two of the main reasons why is because of the steep slopes that are there.
Okay.
And the other is, you know, the, the parcel itself is contiguous with a, a major stream that runs, that feeds the lake. And we want to make sure that gets, make sure that gets protected.
Brett, did you want to add anything about this?
Sure, I think also maybe another justification for it is that, if I'm not mistaken, this lot is recently subdivided off from another lot. And I would suspect that maybe we brought this up at the time of subdivision, and that we knew that there would eventually be a, a house proposed for it. So we, there was, really wasn't any sense in doing a stormwater plan for the subdivision until we knew what the details for the, for the house was, so. Couple other comments that I did share just earlier today, and I don't know if there's anybody on from Gary Bush's office, but the, there seems to be some, some discrepancies in the maps that are showing the property lines. And he kind of, we had a message from him that he acknowledged that, that the, they still needed to clean that up. And I don't think that there's really any reason to be concerned that there's an impact to the, the project, it's just that whatever map it is that ends up getting, or whenever it gets approved, that we want to make sure that the final version of it has the correct surveying data, surveying meets and bounds on it.
Okay, any?
Mike, did this second point on the JMA letter, that any new construction, any new driveway access be outside the 50-foot buffer of the intermittent stream on the parcel, is that met?
I, I would require that anyway, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions before we move on to the flora and fauna report?
Yeah, I got to thinking that if you remember right, Natalie, maybe we should add in the condition on there is it should be a condition for an easement for the sewer on the other property, you remember that?
Yep, we discussed that, yeah.
All right. We'll, we'll have to add that to the condition.
Yeah, yeah, you might want to wait, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so we have sewer easement, lot line survey needs updating or something?
Yes.
It's reasonable for this second.
That'll be a second.
So you want to wait and then I'll add that to the condition?
Yeah.
For the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, can I request one thing without getting too far ahead here, is if, if that is the only, the only thing really holding us up. I'd just like to have some indication whether you're gonna approve this special permit or not. In speaking with Nushin, they would like to start making some site improvements. It would help them out quite a bit if I could, if we know that we're probably going to have a go, and it's just a matter of paperwork for the special permit.
Yeah, let's, we can, so let's go over the flora and fauna report.
Okay.
And let's work, let's go through the short EAF. And then, and then we can move forward from there and we'll see, let's at least review the rest of the documents we have in front of us before. We can do a straw poll, the general feeling of the board, but yeah. So the flora and fauna report, Mike?
Okay, we bring that up.
So those two, so those two things that were found there, are they on the property or just in the?
They're not found there. They are the items that were identified as being potentially, potentially in the unique natural area. The things that they're, they're going to be looking at.
Oh, and oh, yeah, and then that's where, that's where Robert says he was unable to, yeah.
In fact, it was.
The tram.
Yeah, the tram property, we went through this. In one case, actually, they did find one little something.
But it wasn't to be disturbed at all.
No, it wasn't, but, yeah, this one, I, what I read was they didn't find it.
Yeah, I saw the line right underneath it, and here's the things that could be in the vicinity, I didn't see any of them.
Yeah, right. It's perfectly.
Yeah, it sounds, I mean, yeah, perfectly.
There's, there's nothing getting in the way of them continuing based on that.
Then, sorry, there's just so much paper tonight. Do you have questions? So we can move on to the short EAF, if we want to go over that, we've got that in front of us. Again, I'll read these just like the last one, people think there are things to be changed. I think that we went over this before though, and I, I think we went through a round of it already, so we'll see. Does the proposed action only involve legislative adoption of a planned local law ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? It's got yes, oh, there, it's got yes and no checked on there, is this one slightly different than the, no?
Should be no.
Yeah, that's, is, is that a no, Mike, it looks like both boxes are checked.
Should be no.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I couldn't tell, my computer checks and some of them are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether it was my computer or what was going on.
Does the proposed action require permit approval or funding from any other government agency, yes, it says?
Should be no.
Should be no? Total acreage, 1.367 acres, total acreage disturbed, .3 acres. Worked right? Is that, is that accurate, Mike?
Is that just like the square footage of the building?
Is that the total acreage?
This is the total acreage of the parcel that was subdivided.
Okay.
I would say it's before they subdivided it, I think, yeah.
So does that need to be updated then, or is that, okay?
Yes, so basically, it's still 1.367, that should be 1.367?
Yes.
And the .3 acres disturbed, is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's left to be seen, because in the, there isn't a final site plan. It's a good guess, it's probably gonna be a little bit more than that, but it's, it's a placeholder, so to speak.
Land uses.
Number four, all the land uses that apply, there's forest, aquatic, and I think residential is checked?
Yes.
Anything else on there?
Residential suburban.
People are okay with that? Second, number five. Is the proposed action permitted use under the zoning regulations, yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the dominant character of the existing built or natural landscape, yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state listed as critical environmental area, no. Will the proposed action result in some potential increase in traffic above present levels, no. Are there public transportation services available at or near the site, yes. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site, yes.
I would say no.
I would say no to that one. Public transportation, yes, but I ride by there and I ride on the road, so.
I do get the bus there, it's convenient.
You said there's one you're changing there?
8C.
Is it yes?
Is it?
Is it no?
It should be.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, 8C should be no.
So it's no, yes, no.
Correct. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements, yes. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public or private water supply, yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities, no?
If no, describe the method for providing.
Actually.
There, there is a sewer.
It will be.
The drawing.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I.
That should be yes.
And in, in Nushin's defense, this was filled out before we found out she was gonna get a sewer, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for coming back, by the way, Nushin, good to see you again. 12A, does the project site contain or substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site of district which is listed on the National or State Historic Places or has been determined by the Commissioner's Office, the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible, no. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office? Yes, that's from the EAF mapper again, so yeah.
That's crazy, I just.
And, yeah, so it just says yes, there's, okay. 13, does any portion of the state, of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining with proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state or local agency, yes. Will the proposed action physically alter or approach into those, no. Identify the typical habitat that should appear on or likely to be found on the project site, forest.
And wetland.
And wetland?
Or, or wetland or shoreline.
Does it go down to?
She's not on the shoreline.
Yeah.
Oh, she's not on, okay.
But we just said yes to wetlands in number 13, so I was assuming that we want to, wetlands in number 14 too.
Is there a wetland though in 13?
I think the reason for it was just that the information was incomplete.
Right, it doesn't say that there definitely is, it just says that. It just says digital mapping information on local or federal wetlands and water bodies is known to be.
Water body, I think, is what.
The water body is the stream.
So it's, there's that stream there, Mike?
Yes, the stream is part of, is what they're considering in 13A, and then down here, you don't have shoreline or wetlands.
So go over by lens, go ahead.
So we should, should we say here, could, well, I guess we don't need to say anything, I would say stream, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, you'd think there'd be a stream spot, because that, I mean, water body.
In fact, it seems more important than, we see, have more streams than we do wetlands, Brett, yeah.
Does the site, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government, is there, are endangered, yes, lake sturgeon?
Such, what is this?
How could there be?
It's on the lake.
It's on the lake.
That's my question.
But that's what the EAF mapper said.
Well, then, do we have to say?
Oh, wait a second, the, the EAF mapper marks this piece over here as part of the property.
Is it part of the property?
Oh.
Actually, no, because you can't, oh.
I was gonna say.
I thought the railroad, with that whole business about the railroad, and you can't walk across the railroad.
You can own the property there.
That's true, that is true.
Have to find a different.
Well, then, in that case, it would be shoreline.
Yeah, so Mike, is, is this property, does it actually have, or Nushin, whomever, does it actually have lakefront, a piece of property on the, on the lake? Nushin shaking her head no, okay.
The subdivided property does not.
Yeah, no, no, it does not.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's just the EAF mapper, I bet, I bet you some of the weird things are because this has that little vestigial piece.
So, I mean, there's definitely no.
Would it let us change it to no, Mike, or will it kick out the change?
I wouldn't change it to no, because the EAF mapper hasn't scheduled as yes.
Well, then, number 14 should say shoreline.
True.
But it doesn't have a shoreline.
Well, we know that it doesn't have lake sturgeon on it either.
I think what we need to do is we need to make a note that the EAF mapper includes this, this portion of.
Isn't, really isn't considered here, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it possible that the EAF mapper is utilizing the base, the base tax map, which is every time?
Was this done before it was subdivided?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's the whole piece.
Yeah, this is from 2023, so July 27.
So it probably would be different.
So the EAF mapper, if you're looking at just this parcel that we're looking at now, would not include that at all.
That's true, thank you, that totally solves that.
I would feel very confident saying there are no lake sturgeon there.
Unless they're swimming up that stream.
I was gonna say, if there are, they are very endangered.
Mike, so we delete lake sturgeon and we say no, is that what we just did? Is that what we run the EAF?
Can we, if we ran the subdivided parcel through the EAF mapper, would it recognize the new tax map parcel now?
See, you're, the EAF, when you do your EAF, your part one here, the reason you're reviewing it is just because you're the lead agency, this is your opinion, what you feel you need to do. So you can do what you would like to do with us.
Well, I'm just curious though, to Natalie's point, if, there are some things on here that I think we want to change, you know, regardless of the, the questions about the shoreline or not. But if we went and ran the EAF mapper right now, is, would it pick up on the new tax parcel and answer these questions more appropriately or not?
It's possible, I can run it.
I mean, either way, right, because there's some things that we want made to it.
15 no.
Yeah, I would, I would say 15 no, there's no, there's no lake sturgeon there.
So then no shoreline.
Yeah, and then no to the shoreline, so wetland, we could say yes, there is that.
Stream, but it's not a wetland, it's a water, what is the other, water something, it says, what is it?
This is really interesting, you're right, that there's no water.
Water body, it's a water body.
Well, let's move through, we'll come back to the basic value, yeah. Is it in the 100-year floodplain, no, that would be impressive. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge from either point or non-point sources, yes. Will it flow into adjacent properties, yes. Will stormwater discharges be directed to established conveyance systems, yes.
Is there an established conveyance system there?
Do you have any comment?
It could be, it says runoff or storm drain, so you've got your, it's naturally gonna run off, even if there isn't a, a man-made conveyance system.
So can that, under, for a description there, just natural runoff? Or is there gonna be more?
We put natural runoff, but there's also the, the stream that's next, that's contiguous to the property.
But is it just in the stream on the property?
Okay.
Does it run, some of the, if some of it'll naturally run into the stream, yeah, it can be dealt with. Okay. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids, no. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed waste management facility, no. Same question for hazardous waste, no. Okay, so just to recap, Mike, so one, we won't change to yes.
No.
Or no. No, I crossed, I crossed out the revenue. Two, we want that to be no. Three. Um, three, acreage updates in there?
One, 367.
Um, that's, um.
Four, or five?
No. Uh, eight is the next change.
We want change to no.
Did you get all the changes?
Yes.
Yep. Um, 11 changed to yes.
Yes.
15.
And then 15 changed to no. That is a good one, though. Okay.
That is a fine one. Would it be worth running the EAF mapper again?
Yeah, I would be curious if you ran it.
I mean, we have to redo it.
Yeah, that's, that's a thing, because changes have to be made to this.
May as well run it with.
Yeah, I'd be curious, Mike, if the EAF mapper maybe comes out, uh, more accurate.
Yeah, what's kind of funny is, because I'm, I'm looking right here on the, um, on the Tompkins County property mapper, and, um, you know, the, the larger console
Yep.
does, does, goes all the way to the lakeshore, but, um, the EAF mapper, instead of bundling that shoreline piece with the new parcel, it bundles it with.
The old.
Yeah.
For the original, yeah.
Right, so there's something funky going on there.
And as, and as I said before, this was done last, uh, last August, so the actual state might not recognize that subdivided property yet.
Yeah, right.
Okay, um, well, sort of similar to the last one, then with changes to this, we'll wait for, um, part two.
But to the question before, do we see any potential issues?
Oh, as to whether we could.
Ultimately approving it? No, I, my feeling is with the conditions that, you know, um, Mike suggested about, um, the, the easement, the, um, the trees and the, uh, and the soil erosion plan, I.
And to address the 239, we, he already said that.
He's gonna require that.
Have to be that requirement.
But we'll put a condition.
Make it that a condition.
Yes.
Mike, can you add as a condition the second point on the GMO letter?
Yeah.
The 50-foot, yeah.
Thank you.
50-foot buffer. And we don't need to do a super majority when we vote, because obviously there is no rock press or whatever.
Right.
So we're all set with that condition. I think it would be safer just to respond to that. What, which they mentioned, right, yeah, I think that's great.
Uh, and Natalie, I'll run the condition F about the easement, I'll run F I U, so it's worded properly.
Okay, sounds great.
But no, so Mike and Nushin, um, just looking around, I don't see anyone shaking their head. I think everyone seems on board with, yeah, they don't have any concerns about it. But, okay, so yeah, um, hopefully, Nushin, we, um, we have updated stuff that we need at the next meeting and we can hopefully get through it.
Sounds good.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, um, public hearing for special permit number 2024-4770. Peter Han is proposing to renovate the former edible arrangements located at 2300 North Trippier Road Suite Number 6. Tax parcel number 4721-1-21.1 into a Mexican restaurant. This change of use requires a special permit in a commercial high-traffic district, so I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Jim, on paper. Mike?
You just come in, uh, the edible arrangements, which is in the, uh, Applebee's mall, oops, sorry about that, too. Peter's been and has asked to, has proposed to change that into a Mexican-style restaurant. I'll let you go through, you know, exactly what's, what's happening, there's a few questions, but thank you, that is, I'm just kind of giving you a summary of what's going on. Um, some of the other conditions, um, Brent has a few questions also, but, uh, I told you that I would look up, uh, the parking availability for that mall. The way I have it, it, uh, it has a deficiency right now in about 60 spaces. Uh, by the time I figured out what was needed for Applebee's and all the other, um, merchandising stores that are in that mall, uh, they would need 178 spaces, they have 119. Uh, which is, there is, if you look at it, there is an overflow, if you had, really had, it would go into the tops parking lot. But I, I don't foresee an issue, I'm not sure that I've ever seen that parking lot packed so.
I've never seen it full.
You know, they don't need to park in there, so. At this point, uh, Peter, if you want to kind of describe what you'd like to turn this into, and what it's gonna look like when you're finished.
Uh, we're just trying to cope with a casual, uh, Mexican restaurant. Um, probably small dining area, about, if possible, uh, around 30, and, um, also, we're gonna have to go options as well. And, um, when we say, uh, Mexican, we're thinking of tacos, quesadilla, burritos, uh, possibly subs, um, following the line.
This gonna be like a sit-down restaurant or just?
Uh, it's not really totally, because, I mean, I'm not sure if you have been there, but it's really kind of narrow, rectangular, um, so you're not gonna be able to offer a whole lot of dining, uh, seating, but, uh, we do not, we want to provide some sort of seating for those lunch crews. So, um, hopefully, um, if it can get dirty, probably will.
So will it be more like a takeout?
Um, we don't want to miss out that dining as well, because we're expecting to have some, uh, lunch, um, kind of folks, because we have a lot of, uh, apartments and offices around the area, so, um, probably 50/50, uh, dining 50, dining takeout.
Okay, what, when are you, um, when are, when are you figuring out being able to do this, or?
Um, as far as the capacity or, um, as far as what goes?
As far as, uh, the renovation, what are you looking?
Renovation goes, it's gonna be up to contractors, uh, the schedule, we have contacted a few contractors, um, so it's gonna be based on their availability. But hopefully, uh, we're hoping to open, uh, open it up, um, late August or, uh, the early September at the latest.
There's a Mexican restaurant in the mall that's less than half a mile from.
Yeah.
Supposing to open.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a Taco Bell, which.
Yeah, we heard.
Sort of difference, so why are you choosing a Mexican format, given the proximity of the restaurant?
Yeah, you know, we knew, uh, there's a Mexican restaurant in the mall, and also, uh, we heard later after we decided we're gonna go, uh, with a Mexican, but, uh, we have done some Korea, we have a restaurant in Portland, so, uh, it's gonna be kind of, um, fusion, uh, Mexican tacos and Mexican, because, I mean, we figured that it's gonna be pretty difficult for us to kind of come up with an authentic, uh, Mexican, I mean, it, the more we learn about Mexican too, the more difficult it's gonna be, so, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna fuse, uh, Korean, what we know best, and better, uh, with a taco form and taco style.
Right now, a Korean restaurant.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
A Korean restaurant up here would be great.
Yeah.
Uh, we used to do, uh, we did a, we did a, we sell Korean a couple of years down in the farmers market, uh, some time ago. Uh, so after we did a couple of years and then we opened up our restaurant up in Portland, and now we decide to, uh, open up another one now here, but it's not gonna be Korean, but, the what we, how will we? I mean, she's a, she, she, she's a person, does all that kind of, who puts in tacos and burritos, but, uh, we're gonna, uh, bring in a lot of, uh, Korean style, uh, into tacos and burritos and.
So give me an example of a Korean.
Yeah.
That might be.
I've been truly hungry, so thank you.
Unless you have ever tried, uh, Korean, um, bulgogi, which is a marinated, um, beef, so probably she's gonna have some twisted form of this bulgogi.
Okay, that sounds good.
Instead of a typical, um, ingredients, uh, meats, uh, goes into typical tacos, so.
So, okay, so that's sounding more.
We'll try to.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
I want to pitch it as a Korean, a Korean slash.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll draw a totally different crowd.
Yeah, no, that would be good. So there's, so this is what, there's Applebee's is there, what are the other restaurants?
Uh, there's a.
Is Mitsuba still there?
Yeah.
Mitsuba is still there, so it's Applebee's, Mitsuba, and then it would be you.
Yeah.
And then what else is there? The mattress place.
Mattress.
And that word.
A bank.
The bank.
Oh, there's a bank.
Uh, and.
Is there a bank?
Tompkins.
Is there a nail?
There's a bank, I'm not sure.
Yeah, this is.
Community bank?
Community bank.
Oh, oh, there is.
Beelire.
Word pro.
I'm sorry.
Oh, word pro is still.
Bring it back.
Isn't there an H&R block?
I believe so, yes.
They're still there.
There's still an H&R block?
They're there.
I thought there wa, it wasn't there anymore.
They are.
Okay, so in terms of parking, I was just thinking, you know, it's, it's restaurants, but it's also other stuff that doesn't have this.
That's fair, I can imagine, you know, if you look at the size of the mattress place, I don't exactly, like, how many spaces would the mattress place need? They probably aren't.
I mean, it's probably Applebee's, like.
How many other people were there?
That's the only time I've ever seen that parking lot packed, is at dinnertime.
Four, two, one.
And even, even then, when I.
It's not full.
It's not full, they're still, yeah.
It's like, you know.
I don't think the parking's a problem.
Yeah, and, I mean, I, yeah, I don't think the parking's gonna be a problem at all.
I don't either.
No.
When I could, just so you know, during the calculations, uh, Applebee's requires 104 spaces. Um, then you have Mitsuba, which, uh, is, requires 30. Your establishment only requires 12, it's only 1,200 square, it's 1,200 square feet, so it's a, like you said, it's, it's thin and it's long. And then you've got the, the mattress, the other places are 32 spaces, so there's not really that much.
So is, is it, um, would you be open for like lunch and dinner, or is it?
Yeah, uh, we are planning to open, uh, six days a week, maybe not seven days, from 11 to, uh, 8 o'clock.
Okay, well, I was just thinking, you know, some of the, some of the hours that some of those other businesses are there probably.
More business hours.
Don't overlap, yeah, they probably.
Yeah, that, that's, but, yeah.
Right, I don't see, I don't see the mattress place having the same hours as Applebee's, for example.
Or the bank.
Or the bank, yeah.
No, the bank, yes.
There is another place in there too, I just remembered, it's a nail salon.
The nail salon. Mike, what about trees?
Yeah, what about trees?
That's a good question with this.
So were you renting this?
Yeah, we leased it.
Leased it. This is a case where we, the footprint doesn't change.
Right.
Footprint doesn't change, but also, this is a case where do you consider the 1,200 square feet as how many units you need, or do you consider the whole mall?
That's unfair.
No, you can't consider the whole mall, this can't.
Consider the 1,200 square feet, I mean, that's.
Three?
Half three.
Or how many shrubs would that be? Okay. I don't, how about some posies? Yeah, flowers.
Yeah, I don't think, well, I'm just trying to think, how, how, how have we, or would we address that, well, this is a lease, this is different than.
It would be similar to how we treated the VA.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I think so too, um, yeah.
And I don't recall what we made them do or not.
Nothing, nothing.
Other than we had discussed, you know, at some point, working with a developer to come up with a multi-year plan, but that's the owner of the property.
The reason we're having this discussion is because you're coming with a special permit, that immediately triggers our tree code. And that, but we're sort of finding our way through some of the nuances of it, it's a fairly new code, and so, this is, also, there's no footprint change. And at least, I think it's different.
Consistency-wise, it would be what happened at the VA and.
Ultimately, we didn't make them do anything, not even a tree bank.
And this is a much smaller.
Smaller, oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, it doesn't make any sense.
So what is the part that triggers the special permit? Is it the change of use?
Change of use.
Okay.
Yeah, the change of parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we can.
Can think about it.
We can mul, mul it over.
Keep it over for two.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we can mul it over, think, think about it for the next meeting, but that might be something that we want to incorporate into, um, changes in the tree law. Because, and we've, we've talked about this a few times, whether it's, you know, just change of use versus change of footprint versus whatever other things, so.
Hey, hey, Brent, did you, Brent Cross is up here, Brent is our village engineer, and Brent handles a lot of our dirty work, like, uh, stormwater and water consumption and that type of stuff. You had a few questions in you, Brent, that you sent over, you can ask him.
Yeah, we already hit on a couple of them with the parking and the seating, so moving on to, um, just checking to see if we could get a water consumption estimate, because the water consumption is what determines the number of sewer units. And then.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, also, too, uh, associated with sewer, the same thing, the water calculation would determine the sizing of a grease trap, and I don't know if there's, from the edible arrangements, if there's a grease trap. But thinking maybe even if there was, it might not be big enough, so you're gonna need to think about, uh, a grease trap for that space, and then, uh, and my last, uh, category is, does that part of the property have, it's, does it, do they provide dumpster service, or do you have to provide your own dumpster, or how does that work? I believe the, uh, the landlord provides the dumpster, but I believe that we have to have, um, um, if we are, if we need, we're gonna have to bring in our oil, uh, third-party, um, collector.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I saw one, uh, behind that Mitsuba, um, today, so.
Okay.
I don't think landlord is gonna provide it, we're gonna have to contact the third party.
Man, like you said, Brent, I wouldn't assume that there is a grease trap there already, probably.
We're using a 40-pound grease trap in our Korean restaurant, uh, up in, uh, down in Portland, so, um, we, we are probably putting the same size, 40 pounds. Uh, there's plenty for our Korean restaurant, so, um, and also, we use. Yeah, the sizing of that would need to be based on some, like I said, there's a correlation between water consumption and, uh, water, high, peak water flow, and then that determines the sizing of the grease trap, so there's gonna need to be some amount of, uh, engineering or calculations to support that.
So is there a way you can bring the board for the next meeting? Like I mentioned to you, there was two meetings, this is always gonna take two meetings to do this.
Um, honestly, I have no idea how I get the, uh, estimation of the water consumption.
What is their current water?
What is your other? What is your other restaurant?
Uh. Natalie was just asking you, would it be comparable?
Less.
It's kind of hard to tell, really, yeah.
But, uh, we, we used to have another restaurant, uh, in Portland too, it was more of a cafe, um, I think that's probably closer to what we're planning to have. And also, the size of this cafe was a lot bigger, because capacity was like 133, uh, per store. So, uh, we just sold it last year, but I think I, I can take a look at the water consumption on the bill.
Yeah.
For that property.
Would, uh.
Is that something you have in Portland, the Korean restaurant? Is that, is there seating in that one, or is that just?
Yes, seating is about, I think, about 45.
So that might be a little bit more comparable.
Yeah, that does sound more comparable, no?
But based on the, uh, the food, uh, we carry, uh, because Korean, it's a lot heavier cooking than, um, what we're planning to sell in the.
Okay.
At the new place. So based on the type of food, uh, we had, even though we had 133 of the capacity, we didn't have that many people, um, visit us all the time, so. So I think the types of food and the traffic we had, this, uh, the cafe, I think it's gonna be more compatible to, that's what we're gonna have.
Oh, yeah, if you can, I mean.
Come up with some type of ratio, if you could.
Yeah.
What you know, comparing to the size of what you have here, is that, is that acceptable, Brent, come up with some type of ratio to give an idea?
Yeah, we just need some, you know, basis for making a decision, instead of just saying, you know, picking a number.
Right, so that would mean for your, your, uh, the cafe, um, if you could look up what your water consumption was for that, plus have some sort of numbers about, say, seating and square footage or so, so that we could begin to figure out a calculation of.
Even, yeah, even, you know, even though you said, yes, it sat 130, you know, on average, it was really, you know, this much to, just to.
I mean, to give you an idea, even though the capacity was, the cafe was a lot bigger than the Korean restaurant, if you look at the, I can't really, can I share this, to show the sales, but, uh, sales of the Korean restaurant is a lot bigger than this big, huge place, a cafe.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So you're expecting the same number of units to go out the door at this place as a cafe?
That's a good basis.
I think that would be a good place to start, and, yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Great.
Brent, did you have anything else?
That's it.
Any questions, or anything from board members, or Mike?
This is a planned sign area as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. Planned sign area, so there's some requirements as to how big it can be and all that good stuff, but.
I believe the edible arrangements sign was rather large.
Yeah, I think it might have been, but we'll see.
But that'd be, if, like I said, with the planned sign area, just like we had on the, with the Bauman Group, if it goes over, then it comes, then it'll come to the guys for the planning board.
Okay.
We'll go through that when we go through.
So will we see renovation plans or anything?
We don't mean that.
Ultimately, we don't need to.
You won't have to.
No, we don't need to, okay.
That'd be all part of the thing, come back to.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay.
We're excited. And so, so if you end up with a sign that's, that's bigger than the planned sign area, you'll have to come back?
Yeah.
Get that approved?
Goes over the planned sign area before that development, it comes back to the planning board.
Alcohol, alcohol.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mike, Mike will be touched, you can go over, over that all, and.
Great.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Thanks for coming in.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the trustee report.
No. You're kidding.
That last Monday. Update on the video conferencing law, state, it's bound for another year?
Two years.
Two years.
You mean Zooming?
Yeah.
Oh, why wouldn't they keep that forever?
Every two years.
For now.
That's just what the state did, when the state.
Just to give them something to do, okay.
Exactly.
Extended two years, okay.
July 1st, 2026.
And there was quite a bit of discussion about the solar law.
Yeah.
Yeah. They sent you their recommendation.
Now, I have to work on the trajectory.
Natalie still has to do some stuff.
So they really don't like.
The decommissioning.
The decommissioning.
And I really don't like that they don't like decommissioning.
Me neither.
Yeah.
I just really find this a very difficult situation.
I thought that when I had sent it over, I.
You explained it perfectly.
Explained it in the thing, but Natalie, do you have?
Oh, I thought you were.
Oh, no. Natalie did not, I don't know, do you understand?
No, so my recollection is that the decommissioning aspect, she did not like it, they did not like it.
They, I would say, is this?
They, no, it was a consensus.
It was a consensus.
Everything came to a consensus at the moment.
What is driven by Carolyn?
Carolyn is, you know, deputy mayor was wrong on his own, so Carolyn was leading the discussion, and they all agreed that they didn't like a decommissioning plan for tier one, they thought it was too onerous, but there would be a mechanism by which you could notice a property owner of a violation, requiring them to remove a panel.
And how would you enforce that?
So, but though.
Similarly to how we enforce, if they lapse on a notice of violation, like, that either the village can go in and do the work and create a lien on the property, or it'll be a penalty or fine imposed.
But my understanding was, the way that I had written.
It was about the farm.
Was that the only way that a decommissioning plan would be triggered in tier one was for on-farm usage.
And I think.
So it would be triggered if you put a panel on your roof.
Ever.
Ever.
And if we, and what if somebody decides the current.
Well, if the latest draft had have been shared with the. I don't think Carolyn shared her red lines of your draft.
I just, I just don't see how this is in the best interest of the village, I really don't.
I don't either.
And, and I.
The fact of the matter is, is that if people always did the right thing, we wouldn't need a code, but we know they don't, and so this gives us no leverage, and maybe it won't be, well, some of us are still living here, but trust me, it will happen, and we will have no recourse. I think it's very mis, I think it's really a mistake.
So let's wait to get your updates back.
Yes, let's.
Because I wonder if they will conflict with the piece that I wrote in there, about how it's really only for on-farm.
Yeah.
Well, then if you write it differently, that's gonna have to change, too.
Okay.
But let's wait and see what it comes back, and then we.
I don't, I don't understand, I don't.
And I, I have no, you know, after the discussion with, you know, with the trustees, I have no problem not having a decommissioning plan, plan for, you know, residential people who wanna put a solar panel on their roof, I get it.
Right, but not that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But for the on-farm, I think.
No, they were, including on-farm would have a plan, this is residential only, so not.
But it said tier one and two, is what you said.
Yeah, resident, yeah, residential's tier one, on-farm, solar is tier one.
She understands that on-farm has to be in tier, everyone understands it has to be in tier one.
Because that question came up, too.
So.
And Natalie was like, no, you can't take it out of your.
They're gonna be excluded and have a decommissioning.
Yeah, I have to go back to her for my notes.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Okay.
What else, though, other than the decommissioning plan, was there other discussion around the solar law? I kind of looked at some of the highlights.
I mean, they talked about 20, 25 minutes of the decommissioning.
Oh, they also.
But they were talking about it.
Decommissioning discussion was limited to residential. They talked about taking away the height restriction.
Oh, is that right, the height?
Right.
And just having it meet code, like building code and height requirements.
You meaning the height above the?
Like, they removed the eight inches from the.
The roof.
The roof, and they removed that it had to be parallel to the roof.
And we had talked about that, I.
I don't, I don't.
But some of, there was one thing in there, and I thought, I know there was some back and forth, and I had, I think I was.
Wonder about the fire code or.
Right, there was, and if you, I don't know, did you figure, did everyone figure that all out, as it pertains to this?
Yeah, Karen and Ashley referenced what was on there, and, you know, with the actual fire code and building code and residential code. And the, really, the only item that the fire code mainly is concerned about is access on the.
Pathways.
And that's a matter of, you know, the site plan, the layout, and which is something that I would be looking at when I give out the permit, like, I don't necessarily need to be in our, you know, in our code to lay out all those items.
Okay.
As far as height-wise and whatnot, that's, that's not the concern that's in the unified code.
I actually still, when it comes to residential, still have reservations about ground-mounted, too.
They did want to add a height restriction for ground-mounted.
That was in.
No, but I'm talking about decommissioning as well, I just, you know, having seen broken panels on the ground.
Well, that would fall into tier two.
No, yeah.
Yeah, that would be.
But they didn't want it, they didn't want it in tier two either. That concerns me.
Well.
Roof, I can see is probably not gonna happen, but I can see ground-mounted just being abandoned. Well, I don't know.
Let's wait.
We'll see, my edits will be back to them for their first August meeting.
Okay, as long as there's some sort of recourse, but.
Well, I would, yeah, I feel, I feel it's important to, I think there's some places that could probably fail back, but.
We'll see.
I think people are approaching it from different angles for different reasons, and I think we're all approaching it from the same angle for the same reasons, so, and that's, yeah.
You're hoping to have a final draft, so they, this is their July one meeting?
July one, that's what I mean.
Oh, I was gonna say, I was like, that's not gonna work.
I don't know why I thought we were already in July, but yeah, July one meeting. I wish. Anything else, thinkers?
Not much, I mean, Carolyn reported that the Comprehensive Planning Committee is working on survey drafts for business and residential. And Kathleen reported that the mayor had sent out the Board of Safe Streets slash Roads Tompkins Project website link. 37 minutes?
Okay, other business?
I know there's nothing that we can do about this, but it just is bugging me, I know it's bugging Lisa, too, because we talked about it, but the alcoholism council building, they're not keeping up with mowing, and it, the, the grass is, doesn't look so heavy.
They're not feeling one, it's not.
Well, I know, and that's a bad example on the corner, so now we have two properties that are overgrown, and it just doesn't look well.
I had three or four notifications, I'm sending out this week.
The one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't want to get into it tonight, but, here goes, but the one, I had to do a different turn than I usually do, and the, that one corner right by the mall, it's, the tall grass kind of makes it hard when you're trying to make a certain turn, you can't see the oncoming traffic for, just for a bit, you know, so, yeah, I think it's time that some of that get side down, you know.
Do you hear me, an Eric's Chinese restaurant?
Yeah, it's definitely on my list to do before I leave.
That's right.
No, just when he said that, I did notice the sign from years ago, the Imperial Buffet is still out there.
Of course.
The pole is still, I mean, that.
That's why you need decommissioning plants.
That's right, you know, yes, the decommissioning plan for anything that goes defunct.
Anything else? Jim?
Um, I don't have anything.
Uh, just, I am so glad that our road is now paved. I'm going roller skating tomorrow.
I, I, I'm, no.
The lip seems a little. That's, that, that.
Treacherous.
That does.
It is a little scary.
So they did the same thing.
My nail box is now.
Lower.
Yeah, they did this.
I mean, if you catch that curve, it is not.
They did the same thing up at Lansing Trails Phase One, wouldn't end up that way.
Then, they came back later with dirt, which I was like, well, that's gonna, it actually kind of worked well for a while to lessen the curve, but the exact, I mean, it created like a lip, yeah.
Yeah, there are some spots where it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Very easily, like, 10, 12, 14 inches.
You could twist your ankle stepping off.
I know people that have rolled their car going off.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You talking about driveway skirting?
No, I'm talking about the.
Tighter roadway, just the roadway is about this much deeper, yeah.
Did they chew up what was there in repaver, or did they?
They did.
They did.
But they still set it.
Oh, oh, okay.
They've done two layers, I mean.
Yeah.
Ours was, they cleaned some of it, but then they just put more on top, and that's when it created the really big, oh, that's when it created the really big.
Right, and I think one of the things that's a little bit treacherous about that, I mean, because I, I walk home from the bus at the corner, we're by Berdick Hill all the time, there are some spots where it's, you know, almost at the level of the, the dirt at the side, and other places where it's a good, like, 10 to 14 inches.
Above.
Above, and it really feels like.
Scary.
It, it feels a little scary, like you're gonna fall off, and I kind of feel like it may have narrowed a little bit, because once the striping goes in, and you end up having,
Right.
Oh, you know, your white strip on the side, and people bike and walk along the side there, it actually, whether it's narrower or not, it feels a lot narrower, because you no longer have a smooth transition to the dirt on the side, you have this drop-off.
The solution is, you just put up a sign that says no shoulder, and then you don't have to stripe on either side, I'm just joking.
I suspect that.
Brent might have some, some input?
Well, I, I'm not specifically familiar with what, what was, has happened there, but I find it hard to believe that John doesn't already have some kind of a plan for what we call backing up the shoulder, and usually that's done, you know, with a different kind of machine after the paver has gone through, so.
Okay.
And that might be what the, yeah.
Might, yeah, I hope so, because it's really.
No, it is pretty bad.
Was that, did the village do that, or was that DOT? Or who did that, was that the village that paved there?
My mailbox taken out twice so far.
Talking about, did we hire the contractor? Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, because they'll start to come back out and do the skirting for each truck.
They did that this morning, they did that today.
They, they tied in, they tied into the driveway.
Yeah, they tied into the driveways today.
They've already tied into our driveways.
Oh, I don't.
I have something.
If you got a question, give it to John, I'll give John.
Did you have a quick, or that, that was?
That was the question, if they're gonna do.
I don't, I mean, I realize this is not the village, maybe the village can urge whoever is responsible for this, but last evening, when I got back, you know, it was rainy and kind of foggy, the lines, whether it's the central line and the edge lines of Warren Road, like, from the county highway garage all the way to Route 13, were virtually invisible.
That's a state road, I think.
Yeah, and I, I was driving along, it's like, I really had no idea where the road was.
From Warren down 13 to the exit?
No, no.
From just down Warren.
From just crossing, I got you.
Warren Road, you know, the highway garage and Warren Road going towards 13.
Yeah, yeah, they, um, yeah, you're right, because I've been biking up there, and since, they did some work up there, and, yeah, the lines never went back on.
And I, I mean, they're kind of there, and I, so I wanted to see how it looked in the daylight today, so I drove by there, I mean, yeah, the lines are there, but they're very faint.
Listen, when I'm going there slower on a bike, I still can't see them, so, I mean, you can see them, but, yeah.
And when it was, you know, with the rain and that slight fog and everything, and I just, you know, I don't know if I was driving on, on the paved shoulder, I didn't know where the road was. Kind of scary.
Yeah, you're, that's, I did notice that for the first time, just like a couple weeks ago.
And I have one other question, because it's, it's come up a couple of times, do we, do, do we want to put on our list is to look at our parking minimums?
Oh, well, we talked about that, didn't we? Yes.
I have it on the list of things that we should look at sometime.
Okay, because it's come up a few times where it's triggered things, like special permits or other issues, and I think that, you know, we have the right to have whatever parking minimums we want as our village, so it might be time to look at them, because patterns of use are very different now than they were, you know, 25 years ago.
I, I do have it on the list of, there's like a big running list of, yeah, in terms of uses, that's on there. We did that, we added that at one point, when it brought up here, I'd say where it is on the list, except my laptop's tired. Yeah.
I have mine.
I was wondering what's going on with the Maguire project, nothing? Nothing.
Nothing, yeah. I think the last time I.
So it's that we have had come before us in the past year or so, we have this, well, maybe it's been more than a year, Uptown, nothing.
Nothing.
Bo Max?
Uptown.
Uptown.
Nothing got approved for that.
No, nothing, no application was made. No application, did that go away?
They didn't, the Cornell property there by the swim club on Uptown, as you go around.
Did that go away? We don't know. What about, what's, anything with the transact? Do we know anything more about what's happening there?
I don't know, zoning and code search, I got for the property and the property.
Okay. And Maguire, nothing. And how about our friends at Millcroft?
It's not really the ideal time at this point with prices and everything. And interest rates for a big project at this point, so...
And, and Millcroft?
Has something to it.
Sandcroft.
Beer?
Beer, same sort of thing, probably.
Haven't heard anything.
Yeah, it seems so anxious to get us through. He moved his boat.
Did he? And I'm calling you, isn't it?
It's summer right now, I have to say.
It'll be back.
I put a bobcat in there, so...
Oh, he replaced it with a...
How can you see that? It's so overgrown, you can't even...
You can't see it. I just came by today, I came by today and I thought, oh, good, you know, it's filling in the...
You can't see what he's got in there now. You really have to, you really have to strain to see what he's got through the woods.
Anything else with this?
No, just was wondering what's going on.
Natalie? Mike?
Well, I apologize for jamming everything in on the agenda on this one.
Oh, no, I'm glad we didn't.
Yeah.
Got a little crazy, but here we got through it. At least, we should be able to get every, if everybody gets me items this week, I should have things made out for you for next week to just go through resolution and whatnot. I'll get that to you before I leave.
Yeah, I'd rather at least I've had this stuff today to at least, you know, prompt an initial discussion and then, you know, hold it over and talk about it.
Yeah.
And then if, if something changes, you can handle Eric's thing there. Thank you. I mean, what you, your resolution you made up this time for Eric was very good. I mean, it contained everything, so...
Do we, do we have an existing checklist of, like, documents that people need to submit or review?
Yes, I have a question permit checklist.
Or even just for, for, you know, a site plan review? You know, because we were sitting here like, oh, yeah, lighting plan and this. I almost feel like we were making it up on the spot.
I mean, I have them written down on the bottom of this piece of paper here.
But, no, but it would be nice if we had one to review.
So Mike knows, like, hey, when I get a site plan to review here, the things that have to be on it.
Okay, maybe circulate the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
You guys want to list?
I, I would love to have that checklist. Because when we're talking to folks, it's really helpful to know that they've met certain requirements for us.
We haven't passed, I think.
The only other, let's see, we should be able to, you got Eric, you've got Nushim, you've got the storage facility and Peter. You should be able to...
Close those out this next time. We should have enough information hopefully to, to close that out.
I did find out, checklist, I did find out that, and not only will I miss the next meeting, but I'll miss the July 8 meeting.
Okay.
You'll be in the office in between the meetings, though, right? Samuel? Yes. I mean, I know you're on vacation for the one, but...
Yes, the other one is my daughter is getting married in the church that...
Skip it.
How can you consider the person that...
Mike, if you invite enough of us... If you invite enough of us, we'll have a quorum to have a meeting.
I'm a typical father, I just do what I'm told. And I, it's never even dawned on me that it was the 8th. I mean, we're having the wedding in October, but we're getting married in church wedding, just with the family on, on the 8th.
That's my...
So, in a way, we can just party in October, so...
I think that...
So I will, it's, it'll be up to you. I'm obviously back on the second or third of July, so we'll find out what's gonna be on our agenda.
Nice to all meet down.
I will also be out the 8th.
With respect to the 8th, I can attend as a voting member, but it's gonna be by Zoom.
And you said the 28th or 25th?
The 25th, I'll also be away the 8th. I would like to vote on the 25th, but I don't know if it doesn't work out, it's just...
And I will be away on the 8th as well. If you need me, I can come in via Zoom on the 8th. I'll be in a place where I could easily do that.
Wouldn't it sound interesting?
I'm going to Vancouver.
Oh.
Because my son has booked his first professional gig as an actor. And he has the lead in the SpongeBob SquarePants musical.
I get to see him before.
Yes. That's great.
That's cool.
That's great.
The only other item I had, as I mentioned to a few of you, we talked about what would trigger a special permit that doesn't, wouldn't have anything to do with the tree, the tree law, some home occupations. Also, if you want a second culvert on your parcel, that triggers a special permit. That would be another one where you just kind of scratch the...
So is that like curb?
Another curb cut.
Another curb cut, which isn't...